All of our board members are here. Laura Bozey, John Martin, Heath Salit, and myself, Eric Worth. So we constitute a quorum. Now, I suggest, there are three items on the agenda, and I suggest we start with the resolutions, since Paul Henderson and Anthony Miranda are here for that, and I think that will take the least amount of time. The board members have received a draft, and there were some additional suggested edits by Mr. Miranda. The Village Lawyer John First reviewed the suggestions and had no objection to them. Would board members like to start by offering any proposed amendments to the drafts? Let's start with the first one, which deals with the interpretation. The applicant has asked to add two points to this. One is a reference to the page in the plan showing the fence, and the other is a reference to the fact that the HDRB previously granted a certificate of appropriateness for this project. Those changes seem fine to me, and like I said, John First was okay with them, too. John Martin, you had a suggestion about clarifying that the HDRB approval was only, was not a final approval, but only dealt with the purview of that board.
That's right. I just want to include that language. I don't want to make it sound like, you know, the way it's written currently is that the HDRB approved it, and for the average citizen who's reading through the resolution, say, well, why would the zoning board then do otherwise? And so what I wanted to specify that where we say they reviewed it, I said reviewed it for purposes of aesthetic and historical purposes, to show that they look at it for a different reason.
What do the other board members think of that change?
Well, is there any way that we could instead just make reference to, is there a part of, is there a part of the code that HDRB follows, or some way that the word, that we're saying that they proved it according to their, the guidelines that they follow, rather than using those descriptors?
Yeah, I like that idea. Rather than trying to ourselves define the whole function of the HDRB in three words, if we could refer to some objective, you know, at this part of the code that does that for us would be good.
And I say this only because, again, I want to make it clear that, you know, we're two different boards, and this is what we have historically done, where the HDRB has its purpose and we have ours. And I don't want to make it sound in a resolution where we're writing it, and there's like, well, why is there even a resolution? The HDRB has already approved it. Most people don't know that offhand.
Right. I'm looking at the chapter 64 of the code, Purpose of the HDRB.
We could say for their purposes, and then put in quotes, that section. See, and it puts C such and such, and that's it. You can make it simple, and it's direct.
Just, Mr. Chairman, it's Anthony Miranda. Could just refer to chapter, the chapter 64.
Yeah, you could say they approved it pursuant to chapter 64, whatever the in the village code, and that's what, that's the way you could say they approved the fence. I just want to make it clear and distinguish the two bodies and what we're supposed to do.
Right.
But the average citizen who's looking at it wouldn't really recognize what it would mean in case anybody's going back through it.
All right, so it'll read, whereas the Historic District Review Board reviewed the proposal pursuant to chapter 64 of the Village of Cold Spring Code and approved the proposed fence on August 12th, et cetera. Sound okay?
Such fence pursuant to that code section.
Well, okay, then I'll move that pursuant phrase to follow approved.
Yeah, good. That's, that's the clearest way, I think, to do it.
You don't want to say by issuing, rather than approved, by issuing a certificate of appropriateness?
Yes, I would leave that, so.
Agreed, Laura.
Okay, okay, and approved, and then continue the rest of the sentence. Yes, I agree with that.
How about putting in the modifier after HDRB, and it'll read, whereas the HDRB, comma, pursuant to chapter 64 of the Village of Cold Spring Code, comma, reviewed the proposal and approved the proposed fence on, et cetera.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you, Eric, for your effort. Thank you.
And it will go on to say, on August 12th, 2020, by issuing a certificate of appropriateness. All right. Anything else on number one, interpretation?
No, thank you.
Would someone like to move that we adopt the resolution as amended?
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
I'll second it. John Martin.
Say hi.
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 All right, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to number two. Here, there is, again, a reference to, the applicant has added a reference to the page in the plan as on number one, and also added a reference to the HDRB certificate of appropriateness. So I will insert the same pursuant clause into the HDRB sentence.
Yep.
Now, the applicant has also modified one of the later, one of the whereas clauses where we talk about a cri, one of the criteria for the area variances. A minor change that looks okay to me. Does anyone else have a comment on it?
Eric, if I can ask you a quick question, what day was it that you sent this particular resolution? I have a lot of pages here, and I'm just trying to find it.
You mean the one with the applicant's changes?
That's right.
That was yesterday, I think. Let me see here.
Okay, I see it now. Thank you.
When I read this second change, it doesn't, it doesn't read as a sentence. Are we talking about the one that, where the paragraph begins, whereas the ZBA finds at the proposed fence?
Yes, we're talking about that one.
Could you maybe then read out how it's supposed to read, starting with in addition?
In addition, the bordering neighbor at 25 Market Street supports the proposal, writing to the board that he welcomed the screening it would provide for both homes for only a portion of the shared property line.
Sounds better when you read it, thanks, Eric. It wasn't making sense to me, but I see, I see now.
And Eric, regards to that, I just want to bring up a point, where we seem to mention that, where both property owners were happy with the type of fence that's going to be put in. You're gonna, you're gonna find that in many situations. So it's not, that's not necessarily going to be a distinguishing factor. There are many, many homes that are very close to each other, you know, particularly in the village, where both property owners are going to welcome screening. So I want to just make the board aware of this.
Good point.
So I don't know how much, you know, I was trying to locate, and I'll say this real fast, I found at one point back in the day a case from the Court of Appeals that basically talked about fences and the high defenses and the purpose of privacy and everything, and it shot down the, the the request for privacy, because it didn't run with the land. I couldn't really look, I couldn't find it today because I was very busy with work. And that was, that was a Court of Appeals case back, I think, maybe 1950, 1960. The criteria has changed nowadays, but the point is, is it would still be that type of thinking would still be weaved in to the five factors that we consider. And I really wanted to get that case, and I will come down with it soon enough. But I just want to make the board aware that all of a sudden, you know, we're going to see cases where people are going to say, but we both think that we need the privacy between each other, and, you know, houses are right next to each other. And I know we say we're just doing it a limited defense, and you really can't see it from the road. That helps. But, I don't know, just raising a point, that's all really here.
Yeah.
We could simplify, I think we still take into account, as we did in our decision, we take into account support from neighbors. So we could just include the first half of the sentence and say, or make that a separate sentence, the bordering neighbor supports the proposal, writing that he welcomed the screening it would provide, or something like that. Or write that he welcomes the proposal, period, and just, just to show that, you know, neighbor, neighbor support is part of our decision making.
Yeah, that, the rest of that, of that was in there because John Martin made the good point that he wanted to emphasize that the fence is limited in its extent.
Sorry to interrupt, Eric. I'll say this one last thing before I forget it. Somewhere, I think we should put in that, you know, we did reference that it's on a rock shelf or anything, but that plantings would not be feasible.
Something is in there. Yeah, that's a good point, and it's in the next, the next clause.
Okay.
The rocky terrain prohibits plantings.
Okay. Again, I, because these are the exact, these are the very, very, these are the views that the board has constantly grappled with and not approved other fences, that, you know, plantings could be done. And with that in mind, you know, the privacy issue sort of went out the window. And, you know, if you want privacy, then put the plantings in. So we can't, and we made those decisions, and I could think of another, number of properties are in my head right now, and I drove past two or three of them today. And we basically said you could put, you could put plantings in, and in certain, in certain spots, the lighting wasn't as good as what we have here. But here, you have a rock shelf, and plants cannot grow, even though there's a lot of light. So these are the considerations that we've been dealing with historically. And again, all it is, is food for thought. Every board member thinks for themselves, but I'm just telling you what the background is.
Thank you. We could retain the added phrase and make it more readable, perhaps, by changing, instead of saying for only a portion, change it to along only a portion, so it reads, he welcomed the screening it would provide for both homes, along only a portion of the shared property line?
Yeah, as long as, Eric, this is not a bad point. You know, because there are other factors involved here that we can distinguish this from others. So I have no problem with you ever, you know, mentioning it as you do there. That's fine.
Right, you mean that it's only a portion of the property line, rather than?
Yes, it's not only a portion, it's not visible from the street, it's a rock shelf, you can't put plantings there. All these criteria go in to when we go to differentiate these from other applications.
Right, yeah, these are all unique features, or nearly unique, exceptional. Laura, if we change that for to along, does the phrase read better to you?
Yeah, yeah, it's more clear. Thank you.
And then the applicant has, in the final, the resolved clause, the applicant has added a reference identifying the page where the the photos with the gray or earth tone appear. And that's helpful, I think.
I agree. Yep.
Any other issues with resolution number two?
No, I moved to approve it as amended.
Heath seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
The resolution is is adopted as amended, and I will file it with the village, both of them with the village clerk. Now let's move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Miranda, Paul Henderson.
Thank you.
Now let's talk about workshop on 212 Main Street. Tanya Drinon is here. The applicant. And this is a workshop, so the board will not consider the merits of your application. We'll just talk with you about the completeness of the application, and ensure that it's in its best form, so that we can then schedule a public hearing, and all the information that will be necessary will be present. We'll check now to make sure that we'll all be present and sufficient. Did the board members all get a copy of this application?
I see it online, yep.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to relocate it.
Ms. Drinon, do you want to just summarize what's involved in this?
Well, as it stands, I have a an 1800s garage that came with the house, and it's kind of leaning, and it's got rotted wood around the bottom. So it definitely needs to be repaired. And since I have, I mean, I guess most people in the village have limited storage space, I was hoping to optimize the, the storage by going up a little bit further. You know, actually making the loft space that's just basically rafters right now into a storage space that I could walk up to. And Roger Hoffman was planning to be in attendance, but we got the invitation only this afternoon. So he was actually, he's in transit right now, and he is available for future workshops if you have technical questions that I can't answer.
It'll be useful to have him at the public hearing, and we'll schedule that tonight, probably. The board will vote on that. One thing that was unclear to me in the application, and you should, you should include something, or be prepared to, or your architect to clarify it, and that is the extent of the reconstruction involved in the garage. It's kind of a, what seems to me like a contradiction. In your application, you talk about partially reconstructing and repairing terms like that, but the building inspector's referral speaks of rebuilding. Or, and one of them says rebuilding, and the other one says reconstruct, which implies from scratch, or from the foundation up. So we would like to have a clarification of the extent of the rebuilding. Will you be, what percentage will you be replacing with the structure?
All right, we're going to have to probably analyze the wood a little bit more closely, because I guess he hasn't really determined how much of it is usable. The goal is to try and use some of the wood siding that is further up from the ground, because it's mostly the the boards at the ground level that are kind of rotted, and and the trim, the doors, door framing, and you know, some of the wood may be in pretty good shape underneath the peeling paint, and would be great to be able to preserve that, because it's, I mean, I really like that type of siding. If we can use any of it, you know, we're going to try. The new construction would be, you know, the upper part, which we'd have to have new lumber for.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm going to have to check with our attorney. I'm a little foggy on the John Martin has knowledge about this, but John, if if a pre-existing non-conforming structure is, say it's completely torn down and rebuilt on the same footprint, does it inherent, does it inherit grandfathered non-conforming aspects, which is that back yard placement and so on? You have a, you have a non-conforming building with a setback and placement that do not zoning code, and imagine the building is rebuilt from scratch on the same footprint.
Yeah, yeah, let me mention to you, Eric, that this is like similar to the Stone Street Shed, that was an application back about seven to 10 years ago. It was in the papers a little bit, but it could be, it could be looked up. Typically, the old rule used to be, the old rule used to be that
Perilous.
Lose the grandfathering of its location. Okay? Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, because it looks like I have a red mute button on. So anyway, the way I think it is at this point is that they look at the five criteria, and if you were, if you were just rebuilding in that one spot, or even just, if you were just refurbishing the house, actually, just refurbishing it without really starting over from scratch, you, you, I think you'd have a better shot at not necessarily moving where it is on the property line. All right. With the new laws, the way they've come in, and the criteria, the way you review it is, and especially if you're really putting in essentially a new structure to substitute the old, you're looking at all the requirements of the zoning code and finding out whether you've got to do the weighing of the five criteria. So how close it is to the property line is a very significant thing. I think we've had a recent one that was similar, as you know, up on Main Street, just north of the 30190
Right.
traffic light.
Yes.
Where the applicant suddenly came in, the next door neighbor, after everybody seemed to not have a problem with the construction, but there were, there were a lot of concerns on the board about how close the structure, which was being expanded and raised, was to the property lines, and and after, we lost two members of the board because of a pretty heavy and somewhat disrespectful conversation during that board meeting with regards to that application. We lost two board members, and the next door neighbor came back a month later asking to raise their fence to six feet, right where that new big structure was being located. And we denied it, but I, we, I had a sneaking suspicion that might be the case, and sure enough, it happened. So the point I'm getting at is that we have to look at everything very closely, and we have to look at, really, the code is designed to look forward, not backward. And so these have been put in place, these, the rules, the variances, the minimum setbacks for a reason, and that's what we're there to try to conform to. So there's, but there's a lot of weighing that goes in, so we look at all the factors. So to answer your question, does something get grandfathered in? We can double check that, but I think if all they were doing was repainting the house or the structure, they wouldn't have to move it from where it is. But if they're really doing an extensive redo, we have to look more closely at where it's going to be put on the line, especially if they're building up and they're changing the character of it, because it will have impacts.
Right.
All right.
That, the case you referred to on Main Street, I think they, they were expanding the footprint as well. That made that more complicated, whereas in our, in, at 212, it's, it will be the same footprint. So I'll have to get more precise guidance from the attorney on what difference it makes, how much they reconstruct regarding the grandfathering of the existing non-conformance. I believe if, if all they were doing is adding the second story and just doing, only doing cosmetic changes to the lower part, then I believe all that's involved here is one variance, and that's the height. The, because the code allows accessory buildings to be only one and a half stories. So they're asking for a second story, and so it's just one variance in that case. But if they propose to reconstruct the lower part to some degree, then that's, that's a gray area for me right now, and we'll have to look into whether that triggers a need for, for additional variances for the, the two other non-conforming aspects, which are the the rear setback and the percentage of side yard coverage. I wanted to address next the question of the neighbors. As you probably know, the, when we schedule a public hearing, you'll have to send notices to the neighbors to let them know about the hearing. And we want to make sure that you have a complete list of the relevant neighbors, so that you're sending them, sending the notices to everyone who's pertinent, and no one comes back later and said, I didn't know about this, no one told me. You've got three neighbors listed on your application. I believe one that's missing is the Methodist Church, which is right across the street. They're very, they have a plain view of this garage, so you'll have to send notices to them as well. And and then I also, I was walking by the house, and it seemed to me that, let me look at the map here. Seemed to me that the house at number 16 Orchard Street has a pretty good view of the garage as well, from their windows and from their yard. That's number 16, that's the house behind the church, across the street from you. So it's, I think it would be prudent for you to send a notice to them as well. And then, other than that, I think it looks like you've got everyone covered. The next door neighbor, you have neighbors on two sides, they're, they're there. And then, um, other than that, I think it looks like you've got everyone covered. The next door neighbor, you have neighbors on two sides, they're, they're there. And then the Robertsons, which are on the other side of the Methodist Church, and they, they can see right across the church lawn. And they have a direct view of the garage from, from their property, so, and they're on your list, so. Do other board members have questions or comments on the application?
I had a, a question. Um, I see one of the. One of the drawings of the property, it's, gosh, maybe page seventeen. It, it seems like it's showing. Maybe some of the, the setbacks, but not. But not all of them, and I wondered if we should have a more clear. A drawing that's showing, that's showing setbacks. And so. Um, just something that, that's showing where the property line is and then, and then drawing out. Where each of the, the side yard and. And backyard setback would be. Rear yard setback.
When I look at page seventeen, I see, um.
Oh.
Setbacks marked on all four sides. Um, do you see? Like, start on the Main Street side, you see the, uh, twenty-five foot front yard setback required.
No, okay, I was looking, thank you. I guess I was, I see it, so that's. And the side yard setback given is just saying that's how much now exists.
Right.
But then, but then it's showing the full ten feet as going about halfway through the garage. Okay, I see, that's fine.
Um, I have a question about, um, the notice to the church. Does that mean that anyone in the congregation? Um, I mean. Is that the same as just the public hearing, or do they have, um, rights to? Like, vote it down?
No.
I mean, it's not even a, they are only there, I think, every other month or something.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, um.
Well, they're, they have just the same rights as any other neighbor, no more and no less. So they don't have the power to, they don't have the power to interfere any more than anyone else. Um, they simply, um, they are a property owner. And they have a right to know about, um, a, a proposed change that affects zoning. So you would have to find out who the, um, who the owner of record or the manager. Who's responsible for managing the property. And simply noti- notify that person with the same kind of mailing that you send to everyone else. And then that, that person would be entitled to come to the hearing and express an opinion. Just, that's all, just like any other neighbor.
Yeah, would, would be whoever the head of the corporation or whatever is the head body at the church, that's the only person who could really say anything. They might.
Okay. All right.
So I, I'm looking through this application, uh, first of all. The right of way, I imagine, uh, Tanya, that might be over your property, that right of way, it's like an easement?
Yes, the driveway. That's my. Uh, Michael Maripau's entrance to his.
Is that his property or your property?
It's my property.
Of which he has an easement over?
Exactly.
Okay. And when I look at the photos, and you're gonna go up, uh, to, you wanna create a two-story garage. When you, when you see the garage up. Be up to the height of the house?
No. It's, um. Yeah, I, I wish Roger were here because he can tell you exactly, um.
I believe it's.
But it's, it's not as high as the house.
Um, the, the dimension is given in the application, it's proposed to be, um, just a hair under twenty feet. Um, I saw that somewhere.
Is that at its peak, correct?
Yes.
And what is the current peak level?
Twelve, it's on the, um.
Yes.
Yeah, on page four, on the, the worksheet.
Okay, yeah, because I don't see any construction. Descriptions or comparative, we usually. The, the architect who was on the board before would often be looking just at some kind of construction cross-comparison. Uh, proportional. Uh, sizing of one structure against the other. To give a better.
Hmm, I'm thinking that you may not have all of the drawings that. Were submitted, um. I don't know if you're able to see this, do you? Do you have that one?
No.
No, we don't have that.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Very productive, I'm afraid, because I.
This is productive, this is exactly why we have a workshop. The fact that that's missing does not matter now. It would matter later, so, um, we have the workshop, so we know what's missing and what's not. So what I suggest, um, the clerk has posted, um, the, what we, what we're looking at. On the website, the Village website, if you go to the, um, the, the section on the ZBA. There's a, there's a heading that says current applications, and he's posted what, what we have. So you should look at that, and if there are documents missing, be sure to, uh, send them. Send them to him and he'll, and then we'll have everything ahead of the hearing.
Okay, that's good. I'm sorry that you all don't, I mean, that's kind of, uh, I guess a critical drawing. So that you can see the comparison, um.
What it is, is a bulk, uh, it's a bulk of view, which is really what might concern. You know, most neighbors or anything, it is just the, what kind of new bulk is gonna go into that area. And. Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
No, I'm done.
So I, you know, I can see, first of all, because that's your property with the right of way across it, that's already. Given you that, what, well, actually, there's a slight variance there as you get. Further to the north because it becomes nine point six inches. And if we're, we're just building up, uh, Eric, I have to double check to see, you know, what the consequence is of building up. With regards to what the variances might be needed. And in essence, it might be a reconstruction, as we said, right? And also to the rear side of the yard, or what would be the west. Right now, it's currently a two point two, so then that might not only be a height variance issue, but. If there's a reconstruction, you're really looking at, uh, the side yard to the north. The west boundary where there's only two point two, I mean. The shed and, and the neighboring property to the west, on the west boundary line. Uh, we, we have to look into that.
What is the difference between, um. A reconstruction and an addition?
I, I just have to check through the code, I, I didn't take the time to check through the code to see what, uh, you know, a bulk, you know, upward. Uh, construction would mean for side and rear yard variances. Cuz currently, uh, the rear yard, uh, is it, is it ten or twenty-five feet, uh, in this case? Cuz she's got two front yards.
It's gotta be ten feet, it's gotta be at least ten feet from the rear yard.
Well, at least ten, right. But it, I, I guess on a normal lot where there isn't, uh, two front yards, uh, which, in this case. There, she's a corner lot, so that is the situation. But when there's just. A railroad-type property that. On the street, sets back, I think you need twenty-five feet to the rear. It depends on the size of the lot, but the standard lot would be twenty. But in this case, there's two point two, and I think we've got two front yards, it should be. But we can just double check all that. So there's a few aspects of this. You know, with, with regards to potential variances and, and, and whether it's gonna be complete restruct- uh, construction or. Uh, working with what's there. Again, I think, uh, you know, I'd rather not give legal viewpoints to the board, uh, you know, just. Have the cold spring attorney do it, but I, I think he's gonna make reference to the five criteria.
Okay.
Uh, that, that being the driving, uh, force, uh, to, to, to looking at. Uh, and, and to not only looking at the application, but to find out whether constructing upward is going to cause. These variances become, you know, a little bit more highlighted. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, and at this point, we're just kind of looking for completeness in the application, and so.
Why we're looking is to find out what more do we need, cuz what are we looking at? We don't wanna say, oh, we're not just looking for height. There potentially could be side yard issues.
Is there anything, yeah, I mean, is there anything else in that case that we need other than, so we have a, a. Map that shows the side yard setbacks, is there, it, it's. With the idea that that may be one of the factors that we're considering, is there any other information that we might need?
Um, just trying to think, uh, no, I don't, I can't imagine anything else other than the, uh. The building, uh, the architectural plans or, you know, something that shows what the bulk impact might be comparatively to the houses and to. And to, and to, uh, Tanya's half. And that's it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking now to make sure that we have, yeah, we have photos from all directions, right?
Okay, um, so I should proceed with sending out the notices to the neighbors now, right? Or.
Well, assuming we vote to have a hearing, which we'll do next. Um, and yes, that would be the next step, we would send the notices. Uh, by, I, I believe they have to be postmarked by Monday, is it, um, is it a two-week? Two-week, um, lead time?
Yeah, it's two-time, and we have to put the sign out in front.
Yes, um, this should be, Tanya, this should be covered in the, um, application materials. There's, you have to sign in front that you get from the village clerk.
Right.
There's deadlines involved and all, like, and then you, at the hearing itself, you provide an affidavit. Uh, swearing that the sign has been posted, uh, in the, within the required timeframe. So, um, yes, if we schedule a hearing for two weeks from today, which is the fourth of February. Uh, I believe the. Notices have to be postmarked by Monday.
Okay.
Can I just ask, you know, outside of poring through the, um, information and, and listening to. Looking at some of the details, Tanya, is it, is it essentially, you know, step back from what's presented here? Retaining the structure as is and elevating the roof line seven and a half feet. Is that essentially what the request is? If you step back out of the, the documents and the architecture?
Um, basically, I mean, the, the goal is to, um. Increase the space that I have for storage.
So.
As opposed, I'm not quite sure what you're.
I guess I'm, I'm just trying to. Make sure I understand it, the, the goal is to, yes, for storage, but. When I look at the diagram. We're talking about increased storage by just going up seven and a half feet, retaining the, the, the structure, the peak. I was listening, and I understand the conversation around the bulk, um, and, and neighbors respective. But I'm just curious, is it essentially retain the integrity of this, the current structure and just elevate?
Oh, yes, that's what I'm hoping to do. Uh, I think. We're not clear yet whether some of the. Um, the supporting beams, uh, columns might, I don't know, they're not columns, posts. Might need to be replaced, but hopefully not, and I think that. Um, Roger felt like, um, new, new posts could be, um, built beside the ones that are there. To reinforce.
Got it.
The, you know, the existing frame.
Okay. Thank you, I just. Wanted to kind of step outside of the actual. Document for a second, just to, i- i- it seems as though it's simply that that was what your request was, so I just wanted to kind of cover that.
Have you, um, a- applied to the Historic District Review Board yet?
Yes, um, we met with them, um, twice. They. I'm not quite sure, I got to meet with them before zoning, I guess it was supposed to be the other way around, but, um. We revised the plans according to their. Advice, and, um, so they seem to be okay with it as it stands, with the, the plans. They're just, they didn't want to continue the conversation until we had had our zoning meeting, but, um. They seem to be pleased with the revisions.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Uh, Eric, I was just thinking offhand that, uh, if, we'll talk to John first with regards to going up. And what ramifications it may have for potentially other variances other than just going up.
Right.
And this way, we have to alert the applicant if we're gonna be voting for a hearing, so that they don't come unprepared for that aspect of it.
Well, um. I think the, the, the sequence of events is that at, at the hearing, the applicant and the architect will. Give us a more detailed explanation of the construction that will be involved, and then based on that, we'll decide the, um. Which, which, which additional variances may be required.
Well, that's true, you're right, because we're still looking at whether or not it's complete reconstruction or not. Exactly correct.
And, so that, that, so the first step is to hear back from them at the hearing, um, more details about the construction. All right, so, um, Tanya, it sounds like, um. The things to work on for the hearing would be. Adding the missing documents, primarily the, um, architectural drawings that we haven't received. Um, sending notices to the neighbors, and I just looked at the instructions, the, um, the application instructions, and. There's a, a, a page there about how to do that, it talks about, you know, a postal, what, what postal forms to use, et cetera. And they do have to be mailed by Monday, this coming Monday, if, if the hearing is two weeks from now, and we'll vote on that next. And, um. And we, we've talked about the five neighbors, uh, the three that you listed, and then two additional ones. And, um. So, aside from that, I believe, um, I believe that's, and, and then clarifying at the, at the hearing with your architect. Um, the extent of the reconstruction that's required. So, um, unless anyone has any further comments. Two weeks from today on February fourth. And Tanya, I assume that's not too soon for you, is that, is that?
No, that's fine, um, as long as I can give notice to Roger, and he, he actually would have tried to make tonight. No, that's fine. As long as I can give notice to Roger, and he he actually would have tried to make tonight's meeting if you know, if he'd known about it sooner, he was coming back from the city and wouldn't be home until nine o'clock, but he he definitely wants to take part in it. So.
We'll vote.
We're ready for that.
Okay, well, well, consider the fourth then. And if you find out that he has a problem with that, we can just we can just adjourn it and and do and schedule a later date.
Okay.
So I'm moving that we hold the public hearing on February 4. Are board members okay with that date? Did anyone have obstacles that would?
No, that's okay.
It sounds.
Someone said, want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's where we stand now. And Tanya, I'll keep you updated if there are any developments. I'm sorry you didn't get more more notice tonight ahead of time.
You know, I'm really happy that you all fit me into the agenda, so it's it's fine. It's been helpful anyway. We would have had questions, and I think that, you know, it would have been more helpful for you if Roger were here, but at least I've gotten what I need to add to the file and the other steps that I need to take. So it's been helpful for me.
All right. Thank you for coming. And let's move on to our next, our and final agenda item.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Tanya.
So the last item is reviewing the minutes of meeting of January 7. Can we take a few moments to read them?
Just, yeah, just a minute. All right, Eric, I have a point or two if. Let's see, on the first page, under public hearing, between the last two bullet points, where it says there are similar fences in the B1 district within the village, I would put comma and then put however. I would put the record doesn't show any instances where of similar variances requested in the past. Because just the fact that there's similar fences in the B1 district doesn't mean they were validly put in place. So I would, what I would do is at the end of there are similar fences in the B1 district within the village, I would, I would put comma, however, the record doesn't show any instances of similar variances having been requested in the past.
Okay, so combine those into a single bullet point that makes yeah, it makes a logical connection between those two facts.
Yeah, because I I wouldn't want it just sitting there on its own, because it just.
Good point.
Those those two points are interconnected, really.
Right.
I mean, I I know there's few six foot fences right in and around my neighborhood, and one or two just went up. But I'm not here to enforce, and it doesn't mean that they were put up appropriately. And and then I'll take it further. Did you, as long as you've done that, can I, I'll go further?
Sure.
On the second page, under 33 Market Street application head heading, that's in highlight, you go down to what would be the second, third, third point, the inability for tree plantings due to rock outcroppings.
How about rocky terrain?
Yeah, you, yeah. I mean, it sort of explains why the, you know, tree plantings are, you know, even shrub or bush plantings for you know.
If we delete tree there and just leave plantings, because
It'll be.
Bushes are also relevant.
Yeah, no doubt.
I have a couple points unless John did more.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
On the first page under board comment, the last bullet, the house that's on the property line, blah, 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 this being the case, the ZBA may allow more latitude in consideration of a six foot fence. I don't I don't know. I don't remember that that point coming up particularly, but I don't think we generally give latitude for things. I wonder if there's a better way of of saying it. There's a similar point on the second page. Where it talks about that because of the nature of and nature of fences provides greater flexibility, the ZBA considerations and decisions. I don't think it, I don't think we want to convey that that we are softening rules in in under under circumstances. And that's kind of how it reads to me.
I agree.
Then for the first of those two points, would you argue for deleting the bullet point? Actually, for both of them, would you, in both cases, would you say just delete the bullet point?
Which one, the third bullet point or both?
On page one, it would, it would be the third bullet point under board comment.
Yeah, I I think while Mike Michael Mel did there was a semblance of that kind of discussion, simply being that what would be the impact of a fence when the house itself was right along the northerly border for an extended portion? There was that. So Michael tried to probably draft what he heard. I just don't think there's a need to go into that. Because I mean, unless you feel that maybe we should.
Yeah, I remembered in the context of the conversation why it made sense, but I think it leaves. I I do appreciate Laura's point, and I think that just striking it makes more sense.
Do we use it in the resolution? Was that one of the factors that we weighed?
No, that point is not mentioned in the resolution.
So in that way, it didn't, it wasn't one that became really notable on our from our long discussion.
Right.
All right, let's delete that point. Now, the other one, the other one that Laura mentioned is on page two under 33 Market Street, the first bullet point, the one that begins the nature of fences. This was just a general, I believe this comes from a general statement that I made about fences not limited to this application. So and I I see Laura's point about it's hard to get, it's hard to convey it in these minutes in a way that won't invite misunderstandings. So I would be fine with deleting this bullet point as well. If everyone is, if everyone agrees.
I agree, because Eric, what you're saying is basically, you know, your opinion and how you see things when you, what you were trying to take was make a broad scope statement, but every application, as we know, and we've been taught is dealt with independently. So it's hard to make these broad scope statements. And while we do it, you know, in in conversation during the hearings and whatever, or during the minutes, that's fine. But I think in the end to to eliminate it, even though it was probably stated and Mike Mel wrote what he heard, I don't think it helps because every application is going to be dealt with independent.
All right.
On its own.
Makes sense. So let's, I'll delete that point.
I'm just trying to put it out there, you know, basically because this is all recorded, that we're not just removing things we don't like. It's basically, we're making pronouncements, but they don't necessarily apply to each property, and we don't want to confuse the public.
Anything more, Laura?
No, I I'm just thinking, you know, if we didn't we could change, if we wanted to keep it, we could just say something like that these are considerate, you know, the considerations to balance in the five factors, rather than saying greater flexibility or greater latitude, saying that these are factors to consider in our balancing, which is inherently, I think what we're trying to say with that kind of flexibility is saying like, this is, this is something that's added into our our overall decision making. I'm okay either way. It's okay. It's okay to delete it, but that would, that would be a way to I think better represent that that initial balancing discussion.
This general, this general idea that lies behind this point is one that we've debated. And I don't think we all have exactly the same opinion on it, and that's fine. That's the way it should be. So I think it's all the more reason not to try to put it into the minutes when it when it doesn't even specifically apply to this project alone. So John has argued well that no benefit to having it, it doesn't serve any purpose. So let's just delete it.
Okay.
While we're in this section, I would point out in the following point where it says limited visibility, I would change that to near invisibility. Because that was more the gist of what we talked about.
And I agree with that, yes, that is accurate as to not only what we discussed, but when I went over there to look, you can hardly, you have to really look to 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 try to find it from the from the street, and that's standing right at the driveway.
Agreed.
That's okay with me.
I've got a couple of other suggestions here. Page one, under public hearing, the fourth bullet point, fence is 50 feet long. I would end it right there. I don't think the the remaining phrase is accurate. Extending from the front of the house to the end of the rear deck.
That you're right, because that is not accurate. Correct.
And it really doesn't matter. We can't really, the key thing here is that it's 50 feet long. And then going down under board comment, that first point, I don't remember anyone saying this exact point, and I I don't, John, you were talking about the plantings or the lack of plantings, but did you say, is this something you said?
No, I think Heath brought it up that there was a tree visible or it's so designated on one of the the
The maps indicate, yeah. It indicated it looked like there were other trees that were the continuation of the fence line. I don't think it's relevant necessarily, though.
You know, Heath was right, and then Paul chimed in to say and there is really only one or two trees there, and Paul appropriately brought up, these are trees that probably grew out of cracks in the rock. Because there are so few there. There's only like one or two, and and that tree that Heath had pointed out is probably 30 feet down the lot, the proposed constructed fence line, at least 30 feet away from the house, of the porch of the of the guest house.
It seems to me like that. Sorry, John.
No, that's what I'm just saying. That's what those, those, that's what the minutes were, and that was the discussion.
Okay, seems to me like that point is covered by the one about the following point, the rock ledge prohibits possibility of tree plantings.
Yeah.
But naturally, if that's the case, naturally, there's no line of trees there. So we don't need to have both.
Correct.
So I'll delete the first point. And then I would, on page two, under board discussion at the top, the third bullet point, ZBA should issue a narrow interpretation of relating to this application only. That part about relating to this application only is contradictory, because above we say in the first bullet point, that we're doing an interpretation, and it's going to be binding for the future. So by its nature, an interpretation is is not limited to this one application. So I think that phrase is inaccurate. And we should change it to something like covering only the applicant's request. ZBA should issue a narrow interpretation, may or maybe responding only to the applicant's request or something like that. And that was my point, that this is something that I, an instruction I gave, which is, let's not extend the interpretation more than the issue at hand.
I know, because there was that tie in resolution for interpreting the code, it does make this seem, this is, this sentence is more awkward in this circumstance. So ZBA should issue an inter, an interpretation, not a narrow one, an interpretation that relates to this application.
Well, that's.
The five criteria as it relates to this application.
Well, the interpretation does not get into the five criteria. So this is just talking, this is talking about the code interpretation.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right.
Whether there is a, whether the, there's a fence height limit in B1, that's the interpretation question. And so the point here is, let's, let's not, let's not extend ourselves. Let's not make any decisions beyond that, except that narrow point. That's all we're. How about ZBA should issue a narrow interpretation covering only the issue raised by the applicant?
Sure. That makes sense to me.
Okay. And then let's see. Further down, the next set of bullet points, the last point that begins the unique aspects of this application need to be identified in the ZBA. that begins, the unique aspects of this application need to be identified in the ZBA resolutions. And that's kind of uninformative, uh, because that, that's always a true, that's true of every, um, but, but one thing that's not covered here, that is omitted, uh, should, should, and it should, should be included, is the point about the large size of the lots.
Correct.
That was a fairly prominent point, and it, it does appear in the resolution, the fact that these two lots, the applicants and the neighboring lot are exceptionally large for the village, and therefore, a taller fence does not have the stockade or fortress effect that it might in us, in the, in the rest of the village. So how about, I, I mean, that's one of the unique aspects that we need.
Yeah, I would, I would say a taller abbreviated fence, you know, or a higher abbreviated fence, I mean, in a sense of, it's not.
Yeah, let's not even get it, let's not even try to describe it, let's just say, how about if we just ma, change this bullet point to read, the large sizes of the two lots bordering the proposed fence are another unusual factor in favor of the application.
Correct.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
All right, my last point is in the resolution, um, or the, the motion at the bottom of this page, it's not accurate the way it's worded, uh, the conditions, the two conditions that we've placed. So I would just rewrite, um, after the following conditions, colon, I would say, the, and this is basically the same language that's in our resolution. The fence will in perpetuity be stained or painted a gray or earth tone, similar to the color shown in the photos in the applications. And if the fence is rebuilt, it will retain the same design shown in the application.
Correct.
And strike the, um, any future color changes will be subject to.
Yeah, that, um, that's actually not true. So, yes, delete all the way up to that period. I have no other comments on the minutes.
Uh, can I say one thing real quick, uh, with regards to, on the second page, under the fourth bullet point, under thirty-three Market Street? Is the fact that the fence will be a vented design and painted to blend in, comma, pursuant to HDRB um, approvals, comma, is a favorable aspect in consideration of the application?
Are you trying to get in the point that, that, that this design has been approved?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, because it really, we, we sort of approved it because this is what HDRB recommended. And, and we, we, we found, you know, we found reasonable, but really, it came from the HDRB. Am I, am I right or not?
You're correct, yes. This is really their, exactly, this is their, their, um, call, and, um, and they made it.
So I'm thinking, the fact that the fence will be a vented design and painted to blend in, comma, in, in accordance with the HDRB requirement, or whatever they issued.
Decision, they made a decision, or approval.
Favorable aspect in consideration of the application.
About in accordance with the approval that the HDRB has granted.
Per, perfect. The comma is a favorable aspect in consideration of the application. There you go. What, what, what it does there is makes clear that we're not here trying to decide what colors we want.
Right, exa, exactly. We're merely, we're merely endorsing it.
Correct. So if Michael didn't write really good minutes for us to work over like this, we wouldn't have all these points to discuss.
We'd be here a lot longer.
But, but, but let me say to you that all this stuff is really important. We put this time into it, but in the end, you know, we're, we're, we're going to get a better grasp of every single other application that comes before us. And the last thing I'm going to say with regards to the other application that's going to be before us, I think, looking at the Stone Street Shed issue, and maybe even the other application that was more recent, near Will, Whistling Willies? And, and look at those conversations, and look at, look at what those minutes and what went on there. Uh, because I think it, it's going to be highly relevant to what we're talking about here. And I'll tell you, that Stone Street Shed, they wasted no breath, that went on for months.
Yeah, but that was, wasn't that a case where the, the new shed was bigger than the old one?
Two things. The, 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 the argument was that it was demolished, and therefore, they could not rebuild right on the property line, and it was also big.
Okay.
And the applicant argued, well, I'm staying with the same footings, I'm just building up. But, but there was a total reconstr, you know, pretty much, it seemed to be a total reconstruct, and I'm just, I'm going on what I remember back about seven years ago, so that's why I think the board should in, independently look at it. And, and, and it'll, it'll give tremendous guidance.
It'll be easy to look this up just with those three words, Stone Street.
Yeah.
I'm sure there are no other Stone Tree Sheds, another towns.
There are articles, there are articles in the Highlands Current and the PCNR, for starters, if you want to look there.
Okay, at first I thought John was just trying to play a word game to say it five times fast.
Yeah, no, what I'm trying to do is, there's no reason to recreate with, I mean, this application, uh, that we saw tonight is, is almost on foot, you know, right on par with that other application, it's, which was highly fl, flushed out. It went on for months. And, uh, I think by looking at that, we're not going to make mistakes in saying anything different than what we may have said then to what we say now. And that's it. I don't see a, I, I can't remember another one that was similar. There was another one down Stone Street where there was an accessory building that sought to, I, but I think that building was large, they didn't, I, I was already two and a half stories. But I think they were trying to build it into a livable space, which you can't have two inhabitable buildings on the same property. Can't have two basically primary or living spaces, like for instance, if they rented it out to somebody, you would have a property with two independent, uh, structures, housing people, and you can't do that.
Um, I found some art, just to say, I found some articles, so if you, if you go onto Highlands Current, and you search for Stone Street Shed Cold Spring Zoning Board Appeals, um, uh, there's one, Cold Spring ZBA approves Stone Street Shed variants. And then there's another one about the ZBA revokes certificate of appropriateness for the Stone Tree Shed, there are probably some others, so, okay.
Very, very good, Laura, and I'll add to that. I know this sounds funny, and I keep going, but I now remember, this went into litigation. So this was then carried forward to the, uh, to the Carmo Supreme Court, the local trial, uh, court for, uh, 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 an opinion on whether or not the decision we made was arbitrary and capricious. And so there were attorneys there who crafted the language of exactly what was at issue, and one of it was grandfather. So that's even another document that maybe we should get a hold of.
Is it possible for us to get, say, the resolution that?
Yeah, that's public, all that's public knowledge, yes. We can get all this.
But like logistically?
Right over here.
For two weeks from now, should we, how does that, how does that work?
I'm, I don't know, does somebody want to volunteer to, uh, it was just a matter of asking Jeff, start, for starters.
I'll ask Jeff, I'll get it, we'll, we'll get of the, uh, the litigation papers, and we'll get a copy of, uh, uh, the resolution.
Okay.
And I'll see if he can't post electronically for us.
Great.
Just, just as a point for the, for the crew, my, my question earlier with attempting to step outside of the document and just to ask about the seven and a half feet of elevation was purely out of attempting to just deliver more comfort versus, um, attempting to find something else out.
Be appreciated.
It, 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 just to provide a, a sense of relief almost, essentially.
Yeah, I think it can be stressful for applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, is it, should we ask John first to attend if he can, or is there a way, is there, is, is that important here?
I will, um, talk to him and see what he thinks.
Great.
About the issue in general, and whether he needs to attend, so sure, yeah. It would always be desirable.
Or even if he, yeah, if he weighs in with you, and, um, uh, that's, that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, Eric, you could send him an email of all the questions that we raised with regards to building up its proximity, send him just a, a copy, or tell him where he can find the, you know, obviously, he knows where to find the application. But he can look at the survey and tell him they're looking to build up, but they're going to demolish the thing, or it's going to be near demolished, and what is near demolished or complete demolition, and what else, what else needs to be done? You know, what do we have to look at? At, those are the same arguments, those are the very same arguments of Stone She, Stone Street Shed, very same ones.
Right, um, any other business, new business, or?
Excuse me, you guys didn't vote on the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, my. I vote to approve the minutes as amended, uh, pursuant are just one or two changes, no.
I second.
Okay, Laura seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Michael. I move to, uh, close the hearing, or the, uh, during the meeting tonight.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, take care, everybody.
You guys.